Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina. Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Motion to choose absent members.
Second.
All those in favor, same by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody will bow their head. Dear Lord, thank you for the gift of community, for the people who walk beside us, support us and grow with us. Help us to be kind in our words, generous in our actions and open in our hearts. May we lift each other up, celebrate our differences and work together in peace. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
All right, item two under Proclamations, we have proclamation proclaiming September sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty five as Mexican Independence Week. We have representatives from Ave Frontera here, if you'd like to join us here at the podium.
Good evening, well, it's not evening, it's afternoon, yeah, right? Good afternoon.
I'm Griselda Salinas.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Virginia Santana, president de Ave Frontera. Quisiera presentar a cada uno de los miembros que pase para que diga su nombre.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Eva Carranza y soy líder de Ave Frontera.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Amparo Hernández y también soy líder de Ave Frontera.
Buenas tardes, soy Alicia Arzola y soy líder de Ave Frontera.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gloria Deanda y también soy líder de Ave Frontera.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Fabio Ángel, líder también de Ave Frontera.
Un aplauso, por favor.
Bueno, buenas tardes, estamos aquí esta tarde, verdad? Porque queremos hablar un poquito qué es Ave Frontera y quisiera que nuestra fundadora, cofundadora, platique un poquito qué es Ave Frontera, rápido.
En inglés, en español los dos?
Inglés, sabe.
Okay, okay, so Ave Frontera is a family-centered nonprofit. We are a vehicle, we consider ourselves a vehicle for engagement. Our goal is to instill cultural pride amongst our family members and our leaders. And then as well as teach them how to advocate for the educational well-being of their families.
Estamos en FAR, en el sur de FAR, y queremos hacerle una invitación también a los miembros, a los comisionados, y decirles verdad también que muchas gracias por su apoyo, al mayor, a Dr. Flores, también porque él ha estado varios eventos con nosotros acompañándonos, y también a Daniel Chavez, que hoy no se presentó, pero también mis saludos y gratitud a él. Y también queremos invitarlos a este evento que vamos a tener este sábado veinte de septiembre, este, para celebrar la fiestas patrias. Sin estos líderes que están acá y nosotros, este evento no se podía haber hecho. Con la ayuda de FAR también, este, es posible este evento que vamos a tener de cinco a nueve en DRC, en las milpas, en la calle Dicker, y ahí van a estar presentándose nuestros jóvenes de baile folclórico. Vamos a tener, este, a los jóvenes también de Ave Frontera de conjunto. Vamos a tener cena también, vamos a tener el mariachi, mariposas, que van a estar acompañándonos y vamos a tener, este, pues ojalá, la presencia de ustedes y también de todas las familias de Ave Frontera y de nuestra comunidad. Bueno, pues ahí los esperamos, esperamos que nos puedan acompañar. Es un momento para celebrar, celebrar nuestra cultura, celebrar nuestras tradiciones. Estaremos jugando juegos mexicanos, tendremos lotería, lo que es el folclórico, y una leve cenita, verdad, que podemos proveer, al igual el mariachi, mariposa.
I'm sorry, I don't think I heard. Do you have a time? What time does the event start?
Yes, the event is from five to nine PM. Yes.
And this is the first one of its kind, or you guys?
This is the first one of its kind here in the city of FAR. We have done this in the city of Westlaco. But this is the first time that we do it here in the city of FAR, and we thank you for your support.
We're sure you're gonna have a great turnout. I'm sure you're gonna end up being a big fan.
I hope so.
Yes, thank you guys.
Y como dice en la proclamación, verdad, de desarrollo de la cultura, de líderes en la comunidad, especialmente en el área de FAR. Y queremos que tras generación vaya estos eventos, este, creciendo en esta parte de FAR también.
Thank you so much. Doctor, come here. Okay. Muchas gracias por su anuncio. Whereas on September sixteenth, eighteen ten, Father Miguel Hidalgo Icosia issued the historic Grito de Dolores, sparking Mexico's fight for independence and marking the birth of a nation grounded in freedom, identity and justice. And whereas Dia de la Independencia de México stands as a deeply significant cultural celebration for Mexican and Mexican-American communities whose heritage, traditions and contributions have enriched social, civic and cultural life of the city of FAR and the Rio Grande Valley. And whereas the city of FAR recognizes the importance of celebrating this legacy through community engagement, intergenerational learning and cultural pride. And whereas Ave Frontera Inc. Corporation is a nonprofit organization that serves as a family-centered vehicle of engagement, committed to instilling cultural pride and awareness while meeting the physical, emotional, social, spiritual and intellectual needs of the families it serves. And whereas the vision of Ave Frontera is to become a national model for empowering families to lead, advocate for the cultural and educational well-being of their communities. And whereas Saturday, September twentieth, twenty twenty five, Ave Frontera will host a community-wide celebration at the DRC in South FAR, featuring live cultural performances, a reenactment of El Grito de Dolores, and a variety of free family-centered activities, including Mexican Folclórico Dance, interactive workshops, educational exhibits, all designed to strengthen the community identity, promote cultural pride and foster cross-generational connections. And therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, representing Ambrosio Hernández and the mayor of the city of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in him, and behalf of the city commission due proclaiming the week of September sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty five, as Mexican Independence Week. Congratulations. Can we get everybody up here for a photo, please? The team as well.
We can't even put on our JVC yet.
Thank you so much, good to see you. All right, next we have item two B, proclamation proclaiming September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five as National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims. We have Mr. Robert Garcia here, along with several other members.
Just come on, move towards the front of your camp, right up here, on both sides. Also, where's the preference? Have a big group today. I would like to start by the honorable mayor, Ambrosio Hernández, city council members, Mayor Protem, and our family FAR community. Thank you for standing with us today in honor of National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims and our thirteenth annual candlelight vigil. Fourteen years ago, my life changed, the Garcia family changed forever. My brother Rogelio Rado Garcia was murdered on September thirteenth, two thousand and eleven. That pain broke me in the family as the makeup when violence hits you. But instead, he gave me a purpose. For fourteen years, that purpose had turned into action and power to the community, as you can see with my victims next to me. He became greater than my brother, greater than me. Since then, I have walked besides hundreds of families who carry the same heartbreak. And together, we have learned that love never dies. Grieve for a lifetime but never alone. The empty chair becomes less empty, but our love grows stronger. Even through deep sorrow, we have learned to live un día a la vez, one day at a time. On September twenty fifth, we will gather our visual and light our candles and we will speak their names. Rogelio Rado Garcia, Fernando Garcia, Daniel Vega, George Tobar, Jolies and Rachel, Wendy Escobedo, Juan Nava Hernández, Edgar Gomes, Julio Soto, Agustina Molina, Everest Salinas Jr., Cladet Ortiz, Magalena Cantú, Rebecca Lee Cantú, and Gerardo Aparizo, and Manny Garcia. Did I mention everybody? Eric Sanchez. And many other families stand among us. So that day, we will, every survivor, thank you for turning your pain into purpose. To Mayor Hernández and the city council and the city of FAR community, thank you for standing as the pillar of compassion, the pillar of remembrance, and the pillar of hope and unity. Every candle will be light. Every candle that we light has a story, a tragedy story. And we will make sure that those stories will never be forgotten. And for us, as my board of directors and myself and all the victims that are here, we thank you for this opportunity to continue and the unwavering support that we have got from you all. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Before you read that, can I?
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, Bob, go ahead.
This is something beautiful that I've been here with, Robert, we've been here doing this for a long time. What you all do here today is something that, some words my father told me a long, long time ago. They're only really gone once you forget about them. And you keep their memories alive every day, because we don't see everybody every day. But as long as we can keep them alive in our hearts, they will be with us forever. Mientras que lo tienen vivos en su corazón, nunca los van a perder. Porque no vemos toda la gente todos los días, pero mientras que los tenemos en nuestro corazón, viven con nosotros siempre.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing I was gonna add to that, Mr. Garcia, is that the only, the only people who can truly understand what you've gone through is somebody who's gone through that experience as well. So by creating this, I think you've created a great support system for so many different people and we truly appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
So I'll start the proclamation. Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Victims established September twenty fifth as the National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims, following the unanimous resolutions passed by the U.S. Senate on October sixteenth, two thousand and seven, and the U.S. House of Representatives on May the fourteenth, two thousand and seven. And whereas POMC is dedicated to honoring the memory of those lost to violence, recognizing the profound and lasting trauma that families, communities endure alongside the work of the Rio Grande Valley families and friends of murdered children, which has served more than two thousand two hundred families in our region since two thousand and fourteen. And whereas in two thousand and twenty four, Texas recorded one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven homicides, impacting over eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy close relatives, with the Rio Grande Valley alone suffering fifty-three murders and more than five hundred and thirty surviving family members directly affected. And whereas the murder of a loved one steals from a family, a mother, father, sister, brother, son, daughter, husband, wife, partner, grandparent, aunt or uncle, leaving an unfillable void and an overwhelming challenge to cope with their absence. And whereas survivors of homicide victims channel their pain and grief into powerful stories of courage that reject retaliation and isolation, instead embracing compassion, peace and justice for others. Whereas families and survivors in our community remind us that behind every statistic is a life of significance. And through their resilience, they honor their loved ones by advancing advocacy, providing support, promoting prevention and contributing to policy change. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernández, mayor of the city of FAR Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in him and on behalf of the mayor of the city, mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims. Thank you for being here with us. Anybody for public testimony?
No.
Public hearings?
No, sir.
All right, under City Managers' Report, Mayor Protem Commission, every month we recognize an individual that is up in a trailblazer and conducted themselves in the far way. This month, we'd like to call up our Trailblazer of the Month, Laura Saldana from the library to be recognized.
Thank you, City Commission, City Manager, Adolfo Garcia, the library director. I just want to present Laura Saldana, presented with the award for the Trailblazer, Far Way Trailblazer Award. She was the inaugural recipient of this particular award. Very fitting, because the library always exceeds all the FAR traits and principles. So I just want to commend her, just want to read what the award says. Laura, she meets and exceeds all FAR way principles and traits. We commend you and your top-quality performance and thank you for going above and beyond. And with that, she receives an award and also the Employee of the Month and some goodies that go with it. So, thank you very much. If you want to say anything?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. I've always said that I don't need any type of recognition to do the quality of work that I currently realize. But it sure feels nice. And I really want to thank the people that deemed to me worthy enough of this award and this type of recognition. I really appreciate everybody and especially my director and my supervisor, who gave me a chance to be a part of this team and helped me grow within it. And I hope to continue here for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, needless to say, but she is an Aggie, by the way.
So, really quick, Commissioner, did you have something to say? I felt like you were gearing up, okay. Thank you so much for doing all that you do. I think that I can speak for a lot of the administration when, when we say that the attitude that you bring to work every single day is something that we would like all of our employees to bring to the table every single morning. Quick question, how long have you been with the library?
Six years.
Six years, okay, great. And in your opinion, what's the most fulfilling part about your job and what you do?
We just came back from an outreach this morning and we got forty-four new members to this library.
What type of outreach?
We went to Balu, the learning center.
Okay.
So we got a lot of Hispanic adults and their kids to sign up for library cards. So hopefully, we are integrating more and more of our Hispanic community into our library, which is missing. You know, there is a lot lost in translation, Spanish and English, and a lot of people are really, don't know about the resources that we offer. So we really put ourselves out there and thankfully, you know, a lot of our staff just speak Spanish. So we're able to really, you know, bring our community in, let our resources or let people know that we do have options, resources for them. You know, they can't just come here, be stuck and just say, I can't do anything. Like, no, you can, we have resources for you. And because we're a library, we do work with information, we provide information to everybody, and we also work with other cities. So if we probably don't have it at this moment, you know what? I know somebody that does, probably not here, and we will get it for you soon enough.
Great.
And I'm really proud of that.
Well, we're proud of you. Thank you so much for what you do. Can we take a photo? Can we take a photo with this? Next, we're gonna call up Maxine Vietta with the Alzheimer's Association to share some information with us. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, thanks for having us today. I'm gonna let my co-chair speak today.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Laura Karim and I am the chairperson for the Walk to End Alzheimer's for the Upper Valley. We were here not too long ago when we were presented the city of FAR with a proclamation and a plaque, because you guys have always been such an incredible support to the Alzheimer's Association. The Walk to End Alzheimer's this year is going to be at the FAR One Center, as we've had it for the last couple of years, and you guys have been so gracious to allow us to have it there. It's a time for us to get together and, and just kind of share, share our, our journeys as we're going through it, whether we're caring for somebody or we've lost somebody, the community comes together and also an opportunity to learn a little bit about the things that are out there to help us with the disease as we go through our journey. So very appreciative of all that the city of FAR has done for the association. And we'd like to formally invite you all to join the team. I don't know if you guys have seen, but Dulissa, who is part here of the city of FAR, has been amazing and set up, she set up some, like, recruiting signups at the café last week, and I think she has another one next week, signing up some people for our walk. And we're hoping to see a really large presence of the city of FAR walking. Now, don't be scared, it isn't like a five-mile walk, it literally is a walk around the building. So it's meant so that if you have a loved one who's going through the journey of a dementia, a form of dementia, they're also able to do the walk as well. So please come and join us, we'll have a DJ and it'll, it'll, it'll be a lot of fun. And also, oh, it's October the fourth, registration starts at eight. Oh, the, I think Nico was able to put some of these on the chairs. And you could just scan the QR code to sign up for the walk. And it is October the fourth, the walk starts at nine, registration starts at eight. And then we also have some really exciting news to share about medical side of it, about Alzheimer's and what's coming to our area.
Yes, we are very part of the fact that our chief science officer, Dr. Maria Carrillo, will be in the area to present on the latest information regarding Alzheimer's. I don't know if you just heard, the FDA just approved the injectables for Lecembi. So basically, just like the Wegobes or the other GLP-1s that you can take them home and get injected, that is gonna be possible for individuals to be able to do the treatments at home. So we are very excited of the work that we continue to do behind the scenes to make that happen. But that being said, we welcome you to register for Alzheimer's Research Update. It's going to be held Tuesday, September the twenty-third, at the DHR Edinburgh Conference Center. Please join us, it is free. And hopefully, have more information regarding Alzheimer's and what's in the pipeline for all of us to benefit from it. And if you ever wonder where the fundraising monies go to, it goes directly to that research that we want to update you about. Thank you. We hope to see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kenya with our city events of interest.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, city manager, Kenya Gomez, with the Office of City Communications for the record. Before we move on to our upcoming events, we did have a very successful press conference last week. As you all heard, BMW of FAR, they're a presenting sponsor for twenty twenty-five Avocado Festival, which is taking place October eleventh. We're very grateful and excited to have this collaboration with BMW of FAR, because they're donating twenty-five thousand dollars to make our event bigger and better this year for our FAR community with Easton Corbin as our headliner. So we have a recap of that press conference.
We're so happy to hear that you had chosen FAR, or at FAR BMW, so we're very excited for that. And you're always contributing, you're always helping the community.
We're here celebrating the Burt Ogden BMW family and Robert. Thank you, Robert and Janet Backer, for their gracious sponsorship of our Avocado Fest. They're gonna be our presenting sponsors and we're so proud to have them. We are so grateful for the unwavering support. This has been a relationship building in the making and we're so glad to bring it to life. And it's such a great partnership and I'm so excited to work along with Stephanie, Miss Natasha, the Backer family.
And I wanted to say thank you for welcoming us with such open arms to your amazing city. It has been such a pleasure to call this home and do business here. Thank you again for everything that you've done to make this our best dealership yet.
And having them is best, you know, staple event, the Avocado Festival is so meaningful, because it allows us to be able to provide a great event for our community.
The economic impact comes because we consume a lot of avocados in the city of FAR and so does the rest of the country. It's approved, right? And so it gets transported, passes through here, and then we eat a lot of them.
We invite everybody to come out on October eleventh to the city of FAR for the Avocado Festival. And for more information, you can visit avocadofestival.com for all the things you need to know before you go.
So they are a presenting sponsor, yeah, round of applause. That's amazing news. But we are still accepting sponsorship, so if there's anyone watching, any businesses, organizations that want to participate and contribute to this event, contact that Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce. September is also National Suicide Prevention Month and we're really lucky here in the city of FAR to have our mental health unit within our police department. So this past Friday, we held an event called Stick by Me. It was It was spearheaded by the Mental Health Unit. And this was a day for our community to receive resources, information, just so they know that they're not alone and that there is plenty of help out there here within our mental health unit. But they can also refer you to other places if needed.
Light, change, stay, hope.
I think hope, I think hope means it's a lot.
Light, change, stay, hope.
I think hope, I think hope means it's a lot, just for me personally, for this event. But I think the individuals that are here, if they maybe felt lost or in a dark place, they leave with a little bit of hope. Even if it's something tangible, like a card with a name and a number on there, it gives them a little bit of hope that there's help out there.
Our team says stick by me, right? Stick by me. So we understand that at times, you may be going through some situations or some difficult times. We're here to say that at times, someone can be broken. You're not alone, and we're here to help and we're here to go with you along the way.
I am here to say that you are worthy of life.
I'd like for people to know my story. I lost somebody to a drug overdose. And from there, you know, I was very depressed. I was very young. And it wasn't until probably twenty-fourteen, you know, that I saw the signs and symptoms. I was already a professional social worker and I knew that I had to check myself in to get some help.
We, we're battling stigma every single day. Our mental health unit, you know, specializes really in letting people know and understand, educating them that it's okay to reach out for help. And that's why we have these events, like Stick by Me, so they understand that it's a friendly environment of individuals ready to receive help and to provide it.
It's about community coming together and just understanding that life is hard. We all have challenges. We all have stressors. We all struggle. And if we get together, we come together, we talk about it, we can all come to a better place.
So as you saw, it was a very packed event, very successful. And again, for our community members that aren't aware, we do have this mental health unit who specialized and trained to respond to calls that have to do with the mental health crisis. So if you have any questions, contact our, our PD. Our last one is from the Special Olympics Texas RGV. The City of Far was there to support our sponsored athlete. His name is Andres Lobato. Of course, he's a kid here from the City of Far. This event took place September sixth at Topgolf. And the goal of the Special Olympics RGV is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition for children and adults with intellectual disabilities for them to stay healthy, for them to interact with other kids, make friends, and of course, develop new skills.
This event is our annual Topgolf fundraising event. We became partners with Topgolf several years ago to make it an official competition for us. Basically, what, what this does, allows us to do is, it supports over twenty thousand athletes in the Rio Grande Valley through buying equipment, you know, getting supplies, facilities, things like that.
So myself, along with other members of the City of Far family, are out here today supporting the Special Olympics and many other organizations that are also here in support. It's so great to be able to come out and engage with our community. We're here with our player, Andres.
My son, if you see him, you're not going to see that he has done sport to stage four. Just because they have autism or they don't talk or they don't, they don't see or, or they don't walk it doesn't mean that that defines who they are.
For us to be able to come out here and show them support and get them motivated and to have a great time with them, it's so important for us at the City of Far as we're all about community. City of Far has been one of our partners for, well, several years now. They've been very, very supportive and, and really, treated us very, very well here.
And that was our last recap of our recent events. Upcoming, we do have a big event tomorrow. That's Cody's Block Party for the sixteenth of September. As you can see up there, that's taking place at Jones Box Park. From five-thirty to seven PM, we do have free chicken fajita tacos while supplies last, so get there early. It's a free event. We move throughout different parts of the city to really interact with our community. We always have city leaders there available in case our community members have any questions. We have plenty of games and activities for the kids, so we hope to see everybody there. For the next one, we do have a truck expo. This is the second annual. This is taking place September nineteenth, which is this Friday. From eleven AM to five PM, it is a free event for everyone in the truck industry and the trade industry. We'll have a truck showcase. There's prize giveaways, networking opportunities. There are also some free trainings. You can check everything out on the Far International Bridge Facebook page, as well as the cities. Again, free admissions and there's also some job opportunities. So if you're in this industry, we really encourage everyone to, to attend. And for the next one, we have a trash-off event. This is part of our Adopt a Highway program in collaboration with our Parks Direct, Public Works, and of course, our Keep Our Beautiful Committee. So we really invite the community to come, join us, make a difference. It's a two-mile stretch from Business City three to more. We're starting at eight AM and we're meeting at Oil Can Harry's. I was there for the previous one and it's so great to see the children, right? The kids, we get a lot of organizations from high school. So if you're part of a nonprofit or a high school, we really encourage you to, to register. We're still looking for volunteers. If you're interested, you can call nine-five-six-four-zero-two-four-five-fifty. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next we have item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Next, item seventy, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance Adopting the Tax Rate for the Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. Adoption on one reading.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point seven, zero point seven six seven six, which is effectively a five point nine percent increase in the tax rate.
And just to clarify for the community, this is not, this is the same tax rate as last year. There's no actual increase.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
No.
Sorry.
All right, seven B, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance Adopting and Approving the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and Ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. This is where we're going to present the two hundred ninety million dollar budget.
Full move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seventy C, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance Amending Ordinance Number Zero dash twenty twenty-four, yes, twenty, dash thirty-one, rather, for budget amendment to the Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 budget.
Full move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seventy, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance Amending Ordinance Number Zero dash twenty fifteen dash ten, related to Chapter Ten, Alcoholic Beverages Permitting. Adoption on one reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seventy, Consideration in Action on, if any, unordnance renaming public roadway from West Dauphin to Dauphin Canal.
Okay.
Full move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Seven F, Considering, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance Creating the Maintenance Department. First reading.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Seven G, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Authorizing Publication of Notice of Intention to Issue Certificates of Obligation Series 2025 for the Design Acquisition, Construction, and Improvement of Certain Public Works and Authorizing Certain Other Matters Relating thereto.
Okay. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven H, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution for Nomination of Candidates to the Idaho County Appraisal District Board of Directors, 2026, 2029.
Make a motion to, David Moreno, or Donna.
Okay. Any else? Second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven I, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Appointing and Reappointing One Member to the Civil Service Commission. Staff recommends Vittorio Puente. Reappointment?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item seven J, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution Appointing and Reappointing One Member to the Keep Our Beautiful Committee. This is to, new member to replace Romeo Robles Junior. Staff recommends Mercedes Guian.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item made A, Consideration in Action Authorizing City Manager to Negotiate an Award of Service Contract for Self-Funded or Level-Funded Employee Health Insurance Benefit Plans and Pharmacy Benefit Management Services and Individual and Aggregate Stop-Loss Insurance. Staff recommends curative.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item made B, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Negotiate a Guaranteed Maximum Price with the Top Rank Construction Manager at Risk for the Proposed Far Event Center.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned. The time being four forty. Thank you, everybody.